See what happens. There we go. We've got a.
There we go.
Got a quorum, so we can have a meeting. It's six thirty on January second. The agenda's been out appropriately. See, we've got some public here and maybe we ought to. I'm willing to move the agenda around to accommodate Mr.
Wykel?
Wykel? W I C.
A L.
A L, Wykel. If anybody else wants to, otherwise we can leave it where it is.
I'll make a motion if you need it.
I'll second it. I have no problem with that.
What does Mr. Wykel hear about?
He's here about the ninety-five Williamsville Road rock removal.
Okay.
Awesome.
And it's the number six on the agenda, so we could pull it up to number two, or number one, actually, after call the order. And get him home. I've heard, watching a planning board meeting, is like watching paint dry. So, maybe you don't want to sit through too much of this. But we'll do our best to accommodate. Does everybody have the material that goes along with the subject matter?
It's in your packet.
Yes.
It looks like this. This is the first page.
Alright, so we're looking for that document. It says, "Good morning."
Yeah, it starts with "good morning."
Alright.
And it has attached photos.
So that's a pretty thick document. That's six, eight pages here. A little background. I believe there's a solar system at ninety-one Williamsville Road that is primarily located on the eastern side of its lot. And on the western side of its lot is wetlands and a what I think, without a survey, what I think is a rock wall that divides the two properties. The ninety-one, and for lack of a better term, I'm gonna call the lot with the house on it, ninety-three, because the next one is ninety-five.
Right.
So I think.
I looked at the photos online. They're much better.
Okay. So on, I believe there's a rock wall between ninety-one and ninety-three. In addition to that, along the Williamsville Road and private property boundary, along the road, there's a rock wall that fronts the road. I'm going by memory and some old photos that Christina dug up from Google Earth, was it? Or Google Drive by.
Google Earth, yes. Yeah, it was Google Earth photos. They did it in two thousand and eleven. We tried to get a before picture.
These are the pictures you have in front of you.
Someday we'll get hooked up so we can do this thing, or have some kind of a projector.
I saw Christine's. They were better, yeah.
Yeah, these are printouts. They don't come out as well in black and white.
The other thing I'd like to say is that Williamsville Road is on the scenic roads list. And I'd like Alice to tell us what she found, in addition to the scenic roads. It's too bad Craig isn't here. He's our scenic roads guy.
Yes.
Ah. But filling in for Craig, you found, you found another law.
I'm just familiar with this.
Is that on?
Was familiar with this, so I mentioned it. And that is, if you have a wall that's dividing properties, it's also illegal to take that wall down. And it was basically a very old law, I think probably put in place for surveyors because those walls are monuments for surveyors. It wouldn't be covered by our scenic roads unless it, you know, was in the easement, came down through the easement. It presently has a very small penalty, but that doesn't mean that if you went to court, you couldn't also get restitution to put it back. I don't know. And I also don't know whether this gentleman, if you, if you buy the lot on both, you know, if you own the lots on both sides of the wall, then it would appear not to apply, because it's a boundary wall.
But I, I think that is not the case.
Is that not the case?
In this instance. We just learned that ninety-one is owned by Trugreen.
Okay.
And ninety-three, as I call it, is owned by somebody. And ninety-five is owned by somebody, maybe somebody else, I'm not sure.
Okay.
But the wall between ninety-one and ninety-three, I believe, is a wall on a property boundary. And I'm only basing that on going out there and seeing a stake with an orange tape on it at the end of the wall.
That was in the photo.
As it, as it comes perpendicular to the hard road.
You talking about this one right here?
Yeah, that one.
That's the right there.
Okay, it's in the photo.
Yeah.
It looks like it's been dismantled, but it's still a wall. Remains. Now, Alice, oh, do you, can you get us all copies of that state law, or did you guys get copies of it? Alice sent it around, I think.
I just sent it to Christina.
So let me make copies real quick.
You might make a copy for Mr. Wykel.
I don't think.
Yes, I'll just come through.
You know, it's not under our regulatory authority. It's really a basic, but they keep, every year they try to bring it up to get the penalties made greater.
What do you mean by, what do you mean by "not under our authority"?
Well, I mean, it's not, doesn't say who enforces it.
Well, but it isn't necessarily not under our authority either.
It's not excluded. And I didn't do any research on it.
Yeah, but we could.
Who would enforce it, the building inspector? Under our.
Oh, we.
It, you know, it's one of these very, you'll see it.
No, it's not.
Very straightforward law.
Okay.
It's illegal to remove a boundary wall.
But it doesn't stipulate who's the enforcement aspect.
The general bylaw on scenic roads.
I'm not sure if he brought you up.
It's gotta get established that we have, that we have authority to enforce it.
Oh, I gave mine to Bill.
We're passing them around.
I'm looking at our general bylaws.
This is the statute. Yes, right there.
I mean, this isn't the text of the statute.
No, that's all, that's all it gave me, though. That's what came through on the email.
Oh, alright, well maybe I know.
It just sent over the hyperlink.
Too many border wall.
That is what I sent her, that she couldn't click it and get the statute, so yes, it's very old.
Are you looking for the enforcement?
Yeah, I'm at the end of, I'm at the enforcement viola, oh, here it is. I'm looking at thirty-two point six point one on page seventy-two of the general bylaws in our little orange book. This bylaw shall be administered by the planning board and enforced by the planning board, building inspector, tree warden, department of public works directors, and/or others designated by the town administrator. We're kind of first on the list, and so we're gonna act on this.
Also, we spoke to Ryan.
With the authority. Oh, you did?
Yes, I put that in the email to all of you.
Ooh, I missed that comment. What did you say?
That I spoke to Ryan, and he said to check with the others on the list. So I talked to Travis at the DPW, and he stated that he drove by and, without a before picture, he couldn't.
Yeah, oh, I did see that.
It's really hard to tell. I talked to the building inspectors, and they said that they didn't really, because we're currently going through Gardner. They said they didn't really want to weigh in on, is it the moment that they, they felt that if they just put it back the way it was, they didn't see any harm to it. And that was Ryan's opinion as well, but he said that the planning board, obviously, gave it to them. And I actually talked to the gentleman responsible, who admitted that they'd taken, they had taken rocks out.
Who is that?
I put his email in here, I'm sorry.
Chapman?
Yeah, Brett Chapman. There's his attachment one to that fir, to the back of the first page.
Oh, I see it, yeah.
I sent that email to all of you, that they did take it out, that they are willing to make it better. You know, they apologize and want to make things right, so it's just a matter of determining what is right and then asking them to do it.
Alright, I'm, I'm up, up to that point. Now let's go one more step. This all unrolled by the owner of this land and his engineer going to the conservation commission and saying, we're gonna put a, I'm gonna paraphrase it, we're gonna put a solar system in the back there, and there's some wetlands, and there was a whole two or three conservation commission meetings on it. And I congratulate the conservation commission on now being televised, so you can go and look at them. And I did. And the relevant, most relevant meeting, I believe, Mr. Wykel attended. And, and I believe the most relevant meeting is labeled on YouTube as November seventh, but it's really December seventh? Or maybe it's November fifth, and it's really December fifth, but the early, the low number November meeting is really the one you want, but it's really happened in December. It's mislabeled. So, if you really care to, you can watch that meeting. Craig?
What was the gist of it?
The gist of it was that the select, the conservation commission said, "We don't, we don't do stone walls." And I was a little disappointed in that. Craig has pointed out, correctly, I think, that the boards need to work together, because this scenic roads activity is kind of slipping down a crack.
Yeah.
And I think we ought to clean up our own act first, obviously. Like on our website, we say, "Before you do anything, see the tree warden." But maybe we ought to also say, "Check on scenic roads."
Right.
And we could put that up in bold print. And we should talk to the Board of Health and the Conservation Commission, and I think this was his plan, to give credit to Craig. He was gonna talk to these various boards and say, "Hey, give this some prominence. Give this some, some visibility." That's all I got. Let's turn it over. Anybody else?
Just, I want to hear from our guest, too, but I just think that we should put the application on, as well as the scene.
The link for the application.
The link to the application.
How about the link for the application, and then maybe the other boards that would be appropriate for that app, for that process? So it's all right there. Makes it easy for somebody if they have that question.
Or if somebody files an application with us, have Christina circulate it to the other people on the list.
We do have one, actually, that just is going through. We have it on the ninth. We'll be having an application. It was actually very good, because he wanted to get a permit for the driveway, so he went over, and thought, "Nope, not without scenic road." You have to go back to planning board and get that finished, and then you can come back to me.
Oh, that's good. Sounds like we've captured.
So, we are getting a little bit more.
So the process is getting better.
The attention of the DPW.
Right.
Now, if we can get Board of Health and, and kind of count, we can mix.
If you just send an email, it goes, I've already told them, but the better way is to send an email to the Board of Health, and it goes out to all of us, so.
Okay, I don't know about that, but.
Oh, just, that would be great.
Okay.
Yeah, now, here's the problem. We're focused tonight on the scenic roads. Next week it'll be some other law. And we'll have to put a sign up for everybody, "Hey, be aware of Law B." And the next week it'll be Law C. And how do you get the public and these people that do projects to read our bylaws before they start moving dirt around with a bulldozer?
That's kind of tough.
Yeah, it's real hard.
I know that Patty was, I'm sorry, I didn't mean to interrupt. I know that Patty was looking into something. Certain other small towns in the area have a welcome to this town packet. That basically, when someone moves into the town, they are basically given a summation of some of the things they need to be aware of. And that way, you know, because not everybody was here when the bylaw went into effect, they're made aware of just the high points and who to contact if, if they're doing X, Y, or Z.
Yeah, there's also out-of-town owners.
Oh, well, it was just a.
I don't, I don't believe this gentleman lives in town. Not sure, but it doesn't sound like it. Alright, so, is it time to, any other comments before we turn it over to Mr. Wykel? Please, come on up. Take a, take a guest chair, talking to the microphone. You're on TV.
Ah, great.
I forgot to say, this meeting is digitally recorded and is broadcast live and also recorded, so that it can be broadcast at a later date on other media. Sorry, I forgot to say that. Welcome.
About the whole wall thing? Well, they came in and they took all the walls out, like all the way down one side. This is before they had the Conservation Committee's permission to touch the land. So they removed the wall on each side of the property, like all the way down.
On both sides of the property?
Both sides, yeah.
East and west boundary line?
It probably goes back, like, it's a long wall.
Six, seven hundred feet.
Oh, my goodness.
Yeah, like six feet wide.
And the thing that bothers me about it was.
Oh, yeah, it's just completely destroyed on each side. I walked, I walked east side, which I probably wasn't supposed to, but I did anyway.
What bothered me about it was the information on the email stipulated that they did it on the weekends.
Yeah, yeah.
Just kind of.
Well, it's illegal whether it's a Sunday or a Friday.
Correct, correct.
Yeah, so they did all that, plus we had some sand dropped off of our property, and the guy accidentally turned into their property. And they told him to dump the sand back where they were taking all the rocks.
You mean it wasn't due to your address, it was?
It was due to my address, but it was dumped across the street.
By mistake?
Yes. Guy goes, "Yeah, just drop it off right here." So, that was kind of shady.
Did you pay for his sand?
Oh, no, no. I just paid for my own.
And he had to bring more.
Yeah.
What is the, I want to phrase it as positively as I can, but what is the actual complaint?
I think it's just that they took the walls that were, because they're all like six feet wide, three feet tall or more. Just taking the scenic rock walls, basically.
Well, the scenic rock wall runs along the road.
Yeah.
Parallel to the road.
Yeah.
At the, kind of where our town's easement ends and the private property begins.
Right.
But I think you're reporting, they took away the, what I'll call the east side.
Yes.
Which was a boundary wall with sixty-one.
The both boundary, boundary walls.
Well, on, the boundary wall with sixty-five, am I hearing you correctly, the same guy owns sixty, I'm sorry, not sixty-five, ninety-five? The same guy owns ninety-three and ninety-five?
Yes.
Okay.
And he kind of did it without the, the board knowing.
The board, which board?
The.
Conservation.
Conservation committee, yeah, yeah.
So they're doing work on the property, even before they had their okay to, to work on the property.
Okay, we'll let the Conservation Commission deal with that, in terms of them getting a jump before they got their EPA number and all that.
Yeah.
DEP number, whatever it is they do. Alright. In the Conservation Commission meeting, and I think in a note from Christina, somewhere this, the gentleman that owns the project, or owns the land, or owns something, said he wanted to make it right.
Yes.
I'm all for restoration rather than punishment by fine. I don't know what we'd do with three hundred dollars. Wouldn't begin to address this, this, this wall situation. So, in cases like this, we either write him a letter and invite him to come in, or, or have him submit a plan. That's what we do, plans. Have him submit a plan showing on the property line, a property layout, just what's gonna, what it's gonna look like when he's done restoring. That's one approach. Anybody else got any ideas?
I think that he should, you know, file the scenic bylaw application form first, put on it remedial. And I think he should also have a plan prepared, because if you look at the pictures, you can see from the border wall, that wall runs all the way down the road, that it needs to be conforming to that height, width, width.
Yeah, it's gonna be a lot of work.
And he says he took, well, I mean, I don't know whether you agree, his comment was, they only removed ten percent of the rocks from the front? I don't know, but it seems to me a surveyor could, or somebody more than just the landowner, who's the miscreant here,
Yeah.
should tell us how wide it was, how high it should be, and have a plan.
Alright.
Submitted with this.
The scenic road application is an excellent place to start. I think you're right. And it's remedial, it's not initiative. And normally what happens is we have our planning board engineer, Bill Murray, who has probably been through something like this, and may be able to read the lay of the land and kind of conceptualize where this wall was and where it should be when it comes back.
Yeah.
And he should do it pretty soon, before the snow flies.
It's gonna fly tomorrow.
Well, alright, then after the snow melt. But we ought to get him involved. Now, he's not free. Usually the applicants or landowners pay his, pay for his services. And so, it's chicken in an egg. Do we ask the owner to submit a plan and then have Bill go out and survey, and see how, how good the plan represents what would be restoration?
I like that one.
Yeah, I said it, and then I said, I'm not sure there's another one.
Should we get a quote from Bill first, so that we can make sure that the gentleman is willing to pay? Because we can't have Bill go out without, you know, knowing he's going to get paid by someone.
Yes, we will not, we will not instruct Bill to proceed until we have a check in hand. Beyond the point where we write Bill a letter and say, "Here's what's going on. Go look at it and tell us how much it's gonna cost." So we get a proposal from Bill, we hand that, the proposal amount plus application fees and whatever else comes in to our account, and Bill does the work and we replenish, we pay him back, we pay him for that work. So it's a in-and-out account. What do they call it, re-walling? And do we want this gentleman to show up here?
I would not mind having him show up.
He was able to get to a Conservation Commission meeting. I saw him sitting in the back there.
Oh, there you go then.
He participated. He seemed like a good guy. You just gotta get to him.
Right, I think it'd be appropriate to ask him to come in. And a nice letter, I think, would be an appropriate response to it, too. He might not have known.
Well, ignorance of the law doesn't make it anymore.
No, I'm just saying, he might not have known. So I, my opinion is when you send the letter out, if we could speak more kinder.
Concilatory.
Just, look, we found out this is a violation, we'd like to have you come and talk to us, and blah, 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 blah. I'd like to do it in that way, but personally, just because I think that's, let's come in and talk about it. If he starts giving us an attitude, we can change our response.
Am I correct that you said you spoke to him?
Yes, several times, and I've been in email communication with him.
Well, okay, we don't need to write all fancy letters. Why don't you call him up? Tell him exactly what we're gonna do.
Yep.
We're gonna get a proposal from our engineer. We're gonna ask him to reimburse our engineering costs. We're gonna ask him to fill out a scenic road application with plans that are remedial or restorative, or something like that. And then, come on in and we'll unroll the plans and have Bill Murray here, and we'll put forth a course of action. And I think we all kind of know what it is, but we want it restored.
I'd like to put a time limit on that, within sixty days, thirty days.
Yes.
How about thirty?
Thirty for him to come in, or to submit the application?
Yeah, well, he can come in and.
Early February.
Meet with, yes, with us.
Our February meeting.
And if he can't get hold of an architect, or we get ten feet of snow, you know, he can plead his cause, and we'll give him an extension.
Right.
Right, but at least he came in to initiate.
Right.
Right.
Good idea.
Gonna ask for just, I have a right, right over here for my young visitor to go with. I can just, I'll bring it to the door over here.
No.
I just want to interrupt.
We're gonna miss her.
If you'll excuse me.
What is her first name?
Alexis.
Alexis, good night.
Your, your ban's in meetings, we got you.
One more question. This letter relates to restoration of the front wall.
Yes.
Why? Why are we limiting it?
I'm just asking. That's your, that's my question.
With regards to scenic roads application, does the scenic road, I don't believe, extends to the sidewalls?
No.
So are we going to simply ask that as a caveat, that it also?
I don't see why, if the gentleman takes a positive attitude, he says, "Mm, I made a mistake." We forgive him the mistake. We don't impose fines, but we ask for a complete restoration rather than half a restoration. And if he, if he agrees to do that, we don't have to agonize over the sidewall. I believe there's, there's a sufficient law that says, you know, we either cooperate or we litigate, and I'd prefer to cooperate. Now, the other, the west side, is a different question. If he owns both sides of that, then.
That it's not a boundary law.
Yeah, I, I don't know that, well, he should come in with his deeds and say, "Yeah, I own both sides of this."
And that's the end of the issue.
And that's the end of that one, I think, unless someone interprets the law differently. What do you think?
You need a motion.
Oh, make a motion, we do what we just described.
So, the wall in the front is the only one that you want him to be responsible for?
No.
No.
That's the one that's specifically designated in the scenic law, scenic road law.
The, so we'll call that the horizontal one. The vertical ones?
There's a vertical east and a vertical west.
So the vertical E, he owns both of those?
No. On the east side, ninety-one Williamsville Road.
Okay.
There's a different one.
What's their name? Trugreen. We think Trugreen owns that.
Okay.
And so that is a rock wall that is, is.
To boundary.
Boundarying according to the state law. This one is, I think he owns both sides, but he's gonna have to come in and prove it. He's gonna bring his deeds in, or his.
Can I ask you a question? What if he sells one of the properties?
Well, I, I think there's a hundred hypotheticals.
Right, I'm just throwing it out there. If you sell a property now, it's a.
All I'm gonna ask him to do is prove that it is what we thought it was, he owns both sides. If he can't prove that with a real deed, not just come in and say it.
Oh, no, no, we gotta see the paperwork.
Yeah, if he is the quote developer of this project, he isn't necessarily the landowner.
Correct.
And, and he's gonna have to produce something of evidence that he's got both sides.
Right, and that he's legally there if he's left the door.
And then, then we ask Bill Murray his opinion. We're all acting like experts, especially me, and I don't mean to be, but Bill is. And we get Bill involved, and we ask him, "What's the scoop here, and how do we do this?"
So should I wait for a response from Bill Murray before I email or speak to this gentleman?
No, don't wait.
Okay.
Because we, if we're gonna give him a time limit, we gotta give him a starting gun.
Could I have the, the readback of the motion, please?
There hasn't, I heard from Tom, was, Tom was, I'm sorry, Tom makes a motion to do what we just said we would.
Read the plan of action.
The plan of action at the moment is we're going to get a proposal from Bill Murray for reconstruction of the wall. We're going to call Mr. Chapman and discuss filing a scenic road application and coming to the February meeting to discuss that scenic road application.
And providing.
And doing complete restoration of the rocks that were removed.
And providing ownership.
Okay.
Information.
Yep.
And Bill Murray, we're not asking him for a wall reconstruction, we're asking him for the engineering and oversight of the wall reconstruction. He doesn't do anything, well, he doesn't do any rock moving. He does watching and looking at plans.
Do you think a plan is necessary, because that's not in there?
I think a plan is necessary for a couple of reasons. I did drive by there, and there's wetlands on, hold your arms up again. There's wetlands over here. If you're Williamsville Road, and this is the east side, there's water piling up against this rock wall. And that means they're gonna have to be working in wetlands, and we really ought to go back and have Bill Murray, who was also a wetlands guy, figure out how we're gonna do this without.
Yeah, I'm trying to pull him up.
Going backwards. You know, get it done, we're working within a hundred feet of a wetland, and there's some, some rules about that, that the conservation knows better than us. I was a little disappointed that the Conservation Commission, well, I don't, I don't know what they did. I shouldn't be disappointed, because I don't know what they did. But I guess I was a little disappointed in the owner, that he starts work before he's got all his permits in place. That's not a good policy.
No. Oh, I wouldn't do that, though.
Yes.
Let's get it done, especially with the season we had this year, and everything was better, but he just rushed.
So, well.
That damn wall is demolished.
Yes. Is this what it looked like before?
Uh, no, no. That thing was probably three, four times.
I remember seeing it, but it's been so long.
Trucks that they drag out of there.
Constantly for probably three months, just all summer long.
Three months?
Yeah. They took that whole wall that went down the, the opposite side of the house, they just took the whole wall.
The town center side of the house?
About six, eight hundred feet of it. And the same on the other side also.
Three months?
Yeah.
He made thousands.
Every day.
He made pretty good money on that.
He says he didn't make money, but.
Well, when you buy a house, you're automatically not, you can't get recompense, recompensed for.
No, but I mean, I don't know whether he was making money selling these rocks. I find it hard to believe.
Either way, they're taking the rocks out. You're doing, you're basically doing his job for him, so which is saving him money. Either way, they're taking the rocks out, you're doing, you're basically doing his job for him, so which is saving him money if you take the rocks.
It doesn't matter if there's money, we don't
And then the other person sells the rocks to make some money.
What personal, if he doesn't land, own the land on the other side, what's his purpose in taking down the wall?
Uh, they're putting up solar panels all throughout that whole side. So all the stone walls have to be gone.
Money doesn't enter into our decision. We don't care if his solar system makes money or loses money. We don't care if he's financially solvent.
Chapman that owns the solar systems?
He's in charge.
Part of it, yes.
I see.
I believe he's, he works for the company. I don't believe he's the owner.
I think he owns part of it.
Oh, is that what it is?
I don't think he owns all of it, no.
I, I just think it's interesting, to my way of thinking, to know whether this is a business decision or a hapless
I don't think we'll ever know.
If it goes on for three months, it's not somebody putting a couple steps in.
And he said he didn't know that they were taking the stone walls?
Three months? Well, I won't judge him.
It's possible, I'd rather hear from the gentleman who he has to say and
As the person who has brought the issue in, does our plan of action make sense to you and are we
Sure does.
Okay, is there something else we should do that you know about that we don't know about?
No, that's pretty much it.
All right, then I make a motion that we carry out the plan as Christina just read it or she wants to read it again.
Okay, I'd like to, can we refine it? I'd like to say that we make, we're gonna make a motion that we're gonna contact this gentleman, Mr. Chapman
All right.
To do A, B, and C, um, just so it's really kinda
We're gonna make a motion that, take it Christina.
Okay, we're gonna make a motion. Um, it's twofold, one, we're going to contact Bill Murray for an engineering oversight of reconstruction of the walls, both at the front and in the wetlands and in the other areas surrounding the property. And then we're also going to uh contact Mr. Chapman uh in order to have him fill out a scenic road application within the thirty day timeline, uh to appear at our next, our February meeting with uh proof of ownership and to discuss with him the complete restoration of all rocks removed.
And I'd like to say, to prepare a complete application, maybe an amendment, well, we haven't really moved it yet. And a professionally, a plan prepared by an engineer showing the restoration areas, including the dimensions of the walls.
Oh, that Chap- Mr. Chapman bring in that.
Yes.
An en- an engineered, a professionally engineered plan with dimensions and descriptions showing wetlands.
And wetlands, if any.
Uh, not that this makes any difference at all, but I'm just curious, do you see this wall or is this part of your property?
It's across the street, and so when you drive by, you do see the wall.
So you look out your window and the wall that was there is no longer there?
Kinda, yeah.
No, forgive, yeah, I'm sorry, with regards to the professionally prepared engineering plan to reconstruct, isn't that what Bill Murray is?
No. Bill Murray will look at their plan and say, this plan is good or this plan is not good.
Thank you.
It's deficient or it's adequate.
Thank you.
These are technical eyeballs.
Got it, thank you.
All right, so that's the end of our activity, including, including the friendly amendment there.
I'll second that motion.
Very good, Bill. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Should we?
Sorry to be so formal, but we gotta do this written down and, or we forget.
How wide are they?
Probably six feet, at least six feet, yeah.
It looks wide, yeah.
Yeah, there's some of these walls around here that are more than six feet.
Yeah, I have some like that.
Well, that was all done by the, when they were clearing, they brought the rocks over and that was there.
Yeah.
They had a lot of rocks there. Have a good night, thanks.
Thank you, nice meeting you.
Thanks for coming in, and you're certainly welcome back in February to see all this stuff.
Great, thanks.
Thank you.
Take care, thank you.
I'd love to have a six foot wall on my property.
I have one.
Six, I bet if you put a measuring tape on it, they're a lot wider than six, they're funny, they look
Depends how many rocks they found in the land.
Oh, yeah, they put it in the door.
Okay, now, um, is there any question about our jurisdiction on the removing stone walls, MGL chapter two sixty-six, second one oh five? We're kind of, we're not claiming jurisdiction as much as we're asking this the gentleman that owns this property to see if he will comply. We're not coming down here with a heavy hand.
Should we investigate as to what the next step would be if we had to enforce it, so we know at a later time if we need to?
I'd rather not go down hypotheticals, we have enough to do without.
I'd send, send you all, I, I, I thought she could click on this and it would print it out. It's a very simple statute and since it dates from the late
I think I did.
Mid eighteen hundreds, it is, it says shall be, pay a fine of ten dollars.
It says it in there, yeah. But we're not worried about fines.
But I do think that restoration is
Well, see, I have tiny
Generally, in addition to that, but I'm not sure it's our public, you know, whether it's in a butter that has that right to enforce it, whether a court could say, well, this is beyond the zoning boards. I don't know, let's see what he, if he'll come back and
I don't think it's a very far reach from the scenic road to this law.
I'd feel comfortable going for it.
And what we're really looking for is cooperation. These laws and these fines and stuff are like a club. All you wanna do is wave it around, you never wanna actually hit anybody with it. You just wanna say that
Sometimes.
Well, this is, this is what it is. Now, if we put inflation on a ten dollar fine in eighteen hundreds, he couldn't afford it.
Eight thousands, yeah.
Yeah.
But I, mine at the bottom here, there's this little small print, you didn't see that? It says per rock. Only kidding.
All right, how'd we do? We, we get through that one?
This was good, very well.
Thanks for everybody's help, that was a good one.
Can I make a suggestion mo- motion that we go back to our agenda?
Excellent, Bill. I'm looking at January second.
Meeting minutes review.
Yeah, meeting minutes of uh Oh, and would you add him to our February agenda? Start building your, the way you do it, uh you build tentative agendas, and if you could add this last issue to the tentative agenda, we'll start building. And thanks for all your help on this. Digging up the pictures and everything, it was very helpful.
You're welcome.
Yeah, it was very nice, thank you.
November seventh, meeting minutes.
Now, I wanted to know, you guys actually already had a copy of these at a previous meeting?
Right.
Do you still have them? Because if they were nineteen pages long and I didn't wanna print them out without, but if you don't have them, I can make copies now.
I, November seventh. I?
There's only eight that are actually minutes, the rest are
Yeah, the rest are just attachments, that's true.
Yes, you, you
Didn't you email it?
Do you want me to make copies?
You emailed it, do you think you emailed that?
Yes, I did.
Yeah, I read it.
Yes. Yeah, we um, we skipped over that because there were two people missing at the last meeting, so we didn't approve the minutes.
Oh, that's right, that's right. It was January tw- September twenty-sixth that we agonized over.
Yes.
And did approve ultimately.
Yes.
We brought up this.
On the January twenty, uh, I'm sorry, on the September twenty-sixth, meeting minutes that we already approved, we um recognized that the meeting minutes were kind of a summary, as they probably should be. But they didn't capture the verbatim motion.
Right, so that's when we decided that all motions now had to be verbatim. So that's why whenever I go back through, um, I don't do shorthand here, I watch the video and um I write it down that way when I do the minutes.
I'd, I'd like to see us go back and verbatim, verbatimize? Make the motion that's recorded in September twenty-sixth verbatim. Because I think it creates a, a problem and it's not.
I'm not sure, I'd have to look into how to amend minutes that have already been approved.
Well, you can be amended.
Okay.
If not, we just issue it as a separate document, but um there's a significant difference between what's recorded in the meeting minutes and what's really on the videotape. The videotape goes on for discussion, in fact, you uh
I wrote an eight page transcript, yeah.
Transcript. Well, maybe we just attach the transcript to the meeting minutes.
I can do that if you'd like.
Yeah.
That'd be a lot of work to go back again.
Yeah, we're not, we're not to go back, just click them, click them together somehow electronically
Okay, yep.
So that we uh, we can recover all your hard work without doing a lot of work.
Okay, I'll attach the transcript to the meeting minutes.
That'd be great.
And I'll post that.
All right, now, let's look at November seventh, we gotta, I, I did not bring my uh old copies. Can I make copies for anybody?
I can make copies, if you'd like, or if you guys can read them.
I've read it.
I have a copy if anyone else needs to read it.
I read it before I read, I threw all the paperwork online, and it looked fine to me. Did you, did you read it, Todd?
He can read it fairly quickly.
Remember what November seventh was, okay. Todd Williams was here, Faye Zakowski, everybody
It was a long year.
Everybody was doing the, the Roberts Rules thing.
Yeah, it was the long meeting.
I, I can't do this just right as I sit here. I'd, I'd be wasting everybody's time, but I remember this one. And it was pretty contentious. People were all set to Anybody have a big problem if I take this home, refresh my memory and
Come back next week.
Come back. Yeah, next week, we're gonna meet in a week.
I make a motion, we, we accept the, on our next meeting next week.
I forgot it was only a week away.
We'll post them.
Thank you very much for accommodating me, I just, I've just been working on something else and this did not surface for me. And I apologize. It was on the agenda and I should've had it done. True Green. They uh came in, the Burton engineer came in, he stood there and he talked about the project. And I said to him that we really need about a two thousand dollar check to fund Mr. Murray to go down and do a
Survey.
Yeah, but they called it a uh permit, conditions compliance or something, compliance. Yeah, and um he said, okay, and he left the room and haven't heard from him since.
No, I thought there was a letter going to be written to him regarding that.
I called him up. I called up uh Noah
Segal.
Well, first off, I think True Green sent in a letter
Yes, it's here.
About who owns what and they're the new owners.
Right.
And while that's clarifying, it doesn't address the issue. So I called Noah Segal. That's Noah Segal, right?
Yes.
I called Noah and left a message, and didn't get anything back from him. Um, would you, I make a motion that Christina calls Noah Segal. If in a couple of days she doesn't get a response, she starts with a letter. And it's pretty simple, he should talk to his Burton engineering guy, Greg, somebody and uh, and uh
Get
the lay of the land from the meeting and uh, or I shouldn't say lay of the land, I should say plan of action from the meeting. And um comply. Well, it's a long motion. Contact, contact True Green and and, and done them, D U N N, done them for their check.
For Mr. Murray.
For Mr. Murray, either
For compliance.
On phone or in writing.
Yeah, I don't care how she does it. But if they're, if they're, if they give you the no return phone call thing, send them an email.
Is it all right if I also um got, get in touch with um Nicholas Mind Kimmy, the person who wrote the email? He said that it was okay to contact either of them with regards to this True Green man.
He's at the bottom of the letter, here he is.
Right, but it's
Contact both?
Oh, there we go.
Yeah, you both.
Okay.
I'll second that motion.
All right, all in favor?
Aye.
Yeah, gravel perry port. She had about three hundred and, well, the the one we were focused on, I think, was Marinelli with the illegal dog. What do you got, Bill?
Nothing with me.
You didn't bring the three hundred and fifty tons?
No, it's kinda heavy. I apologize, folks, I thought tonight we were reviewing, I kinda, so I apologize for that. I didn't prepare or bring anything with me.
Have you been down there or have you
I haven't been down there except for the first time I went down with Tom. But I've been out there a hundred times over the years while I was a police officer, I've seen it many times.
The pile?
Oh, the piles, yes.
Are you sure they're getting bigger?
Uh, they, I don't think they've grown.
Okay.
I, they look the same to me, but again, it's from memory. But um, in the talking with the officer, I went down and he says, yeah, these are the same ones, I haven't seen any difference, nobody's been out here. And you can't see the evidence, any new tracks out there either, after all this time. Um, what would be our next step?
Well, I recall that during the Marinelli special permit deliberations, um, they said they would quote, take care of it. And I don't think that means dig a hole and bury it, I think it means take it out of there.
Right.
Because it was material that was from a construction project of some type, and we don't really know what it is. So um, maybe we should write a letter to Marinelli and say
We're waiting for you.
What, what's your plan of action? Probably not gonna happen in the dead of winter, but we can get him going, we can get him thinking about it.
Now, where would I find all the documentation for this, these meetings and all this stuff, so I can get myself really verbalized on it?
Well, do you need him for this letter?
I don't know.
All right, then, um, let's do the letter thing.
So we want to make a motion that we
That we have Christina
I'll make a motion, ask Christina, uh, make a contact there with the Mar- Marinellis to at, please ask us for the update on the removal of the, what should I call it?
Debris.
Construction debris.
On the pits, on pitch of a road, in the pits.
And Christina, you're free to call and if calling isn't effective, write a letter. You can, you're authorized to construct a very simple, one paragraph letter and
Okay.
Get it done.
Okay.
As, as I know you will do well now.
Okay.
So if that's the motion.
Uh, before we, the thing is, this has been an issue for how many years with them?
Fifteen.
What about a um registered letter? They have to sign for him.
Oh.
Should we do that upfront or wait and just maybe send them an email or a first letter? If they come right back to us, then we don't have to spend the money. If they don't reply in a timely fashion, then I would suggest, yeah, that's a, a good way to go.
Small amount to pay.
That's up, that's up to you guys.
I'll pay it.
Yeah, I, I, I watched that whole, I mean, we worked on this permit or non-permit for
Months.
I think it was fifteen or eighteen months.
Wow.
And um nothing ever happened. So, I like your suggestion.
You what?
I like your suggestion. It costs six bucks.
Okay.
And you know, you know it's delivered and you force them to acknowledge it, they sign it, they give it back a little green card.
Yeah, so you know they have it.
Yeah. Please send it registered.
Yep.
There's a couple addresses, but the, I understood the address in Wallfam on um, can't remember the name of the street, but it's a regular numbered house in Wallfam.
Okay, and I'll look it up online just in case they've switched addresses.
Okay. They also had a lawyer present in these meetings. And I'd have to go to the file and dig that up, but the file is in our
I've seen it, it's pretty thick.
Yeah. Well then, if you know where it is, I'm gonna invite you to look through it. You said, where is it?
Well, no, I could go, look, we, we spent a little bit one day and that was a while, a while back, but uh, um, I'll go start looking through it.
Yeah, it was a lawyer's name, it was an engineering name. They had quite a team here.
I thought they lived right up by Williamsville Road.
No, that they, they maybe did it one time, but they
I thought they still were.
No longer live there.
Okay.
They retired from the moving dirt business and moved away, I think. Is it clear?
Yes, except I don't have a second on that motion.
I'll second it.
Perfect.
Thank you.
And uh, all in favor?
Aye.
Registered letter of Marinelli. One forty-seven Williamsville Road. The concern here is that um the land on which they're building the solar system, Borrego is building a solar system and there are, there's a people that own the property. When the, when the solar system goes, yeah, when the solar system goes in at least two things happen and sometimes three things happen. One, they pay a pilot, which is payment in lieu of taxes which is really payment in lieu of property tax on the stuff that's above ground, solar panels and transformers On the stuff that's above ground, solar panels and transformers and all that stuff. And in this instance, Borrego is slated to pay between sixty-five and seventy thousand dollars a year.
I've sat on those pilot agreement and negotiated that out. And it's, and what they do is they, they, they start out, the equipment is worth a tax as much in the beginning. And as it depreciates, at the end, it will be worth less so the town wouldn't get as much. So what they do is they do a level funding for that entire time. So every year, the town gets the same amount of money. That's why they do a pilot. That's all part of that program, which I think is really good for the town.
That's, that's close and you can do it that way. And Gardner does it that way. But what we did in this town, if I understand it correctly, and I haven't seen the final, final permit, or final, final. Pilot agreement is that it is escalatable at, I think, two and a half percent per year. So that you get, say, sixty-five thousand dollars in year one and in year twenty.
Right.
It goes up to about a hundred and three thousand dollars for a grand total of just. Straight ahead money. It's like a, like a million six or a million seven, which is a pretty good twenty year payout. That's the first thing that happens. The second thing that happens is the land that the property is built on, and in this case, it's some twenty-four, twenty-five acres, I think.
Classified.
Yeah.
Is the word classified?
Yeah, I believe so.
I wanna say it's not rezoned. It's just reclassified as industrial land.
Reclassified.
And it moves from forest taxation rate to industrial land taxation rate. And every year, due to that, the town picks up another lump of money. And I don't know, we could do some back of the, back of the envelope calculations. So I think the land's worth about, in industrial sense, it's worth about six thousand dollars an acre. And it's, say, twenty acres. And then our, times our tax rate. So I can't do that in my head. Used to be able to, but I can't do it anymore. A lot of brain cells ago. But anyway, it's a significant amount of money. Then the third thing that happens to some situations is they have to establish that. The land, they have to move the land from chapter sixty-one to. For lack of a better term, I'm gonna say regular land. Chapter sixty-one is a tax advantaged category.
And they have to pay the back taxes when they pull it out.
They have to pay a certain number of years of back taxes. And when, and, and so that only happens once. That's a one-time payment.
Correct.
That's not an every year thing.
Right.
And the town gets, the town gets a lump of money because it's come out of chapter sixty-one. Now, I was also reading lately that when you take chapter sixty-one and you wanna do something else with it, you change its use. Then it triggers what's called the right of first refusal for the town to step in and buy that land at market rate. And I'm pretty sure I'm right when I say market rate.
That's right.
Okay, Alice is nodding her head along with me here. Thank you. And I'm really trying to say this to the public, not just us.
Yeah.
So there, there's a option that the town can exercise. When, when you go into chapter sixty-one, you recognize that you give the town this option. And the town can option it when you're coming out of sixty-one. And so you come out of sixty-one and the town gets an option to buy what's called the right of first refusal. They can step in line and be the first purchaser of this land at market rate. Well. I think that's good when the land is in some way precious or advantageous or, or of great value or strategic value, its position or its qualities. In this instance, the. Project developer has come into the select board and said, please waive that right. Don't, don't exercise your right to buy, have, have a right of first refusal. Waive that right because we wanna put a solar system in. And of course, then you start arguing about or evaluating whether the solar system is better than a park or a basketball court or whatever, whatever you're doing there. And in this instance, I've walked the land, I've looked at the plans and the plans were attached to the, to the letter that they sent regarding this waiver. And I would be, I would recommend that we. We, we don't grant the waiver. We would write a note to the select board saying we moved and voted that they grant the waiver. Making a recommendation to the planning board. Is that right, Alice?
The select board.
Select.
A select board, yeah. Am I doing that right? Cause.
I, I would, I would say we would have no objection to the granting of the waiver. It's really within their discretion.
It is, but we, we should stand up and be counted.
Okay, but.
And that's why.
We see no reason why it should not be granted. It would probably be deferential to them. Cause they're the people that.
Right. The land is sloped.
Yeah.
It's not effectively parkland or precious land in the sense. It's, it's way in the back. It's got a long access road. It's not going to be like the playground area up here or the recreation field.
Right.
Where you can, you can use it and feel like you're not isolated.
We'd have to bust the kids out there.
So, long story short, I think the, I would direct the planning board, in my opinion, the planning board should recommend that the select board grant this waiver. And anybody else got any comments? I dragged, dragged you through all that because I wanted the public to understand what's going on. All right?
Good information. I think, I think I'll second the motion to send an approval letter to the selectmen that we agree that they should, with their discretion.
I think you're making the motion, not seconding it.
I thought you just made it, no.
No, I think I said, I'd take a motion.
Oh, oh, I'm sorry. I'll make the motion that we draft a letter, send a letter to the selectmen approving the granting of this waiver.
All right.
Through, through the select board.
I'm gonna ask Alice to make a friendly amendment and use her phraseology.
There you go.
Cause you had a phrase, you just said it and I can't remember it. It was, that we have no objection.
We see no reason why the waiver should not be granted by the select board in this case.
That sounds real. Directly. Yes.
This is under discussion? You can make a second.
Oh, sure.
I, I'm, just, I spent some time puzzling over this plan. And. I, do they own the land on the, you know, it's very blurry. Do they own the land on either side of this as well?
I can help you.
And how much frontage is there actually on Williamsville Road?
I can't tell you the number, but it's enough.
Okay.
They have got a, they have got a permit in hand.
Yes, from you. I saw that. Well, from the planning board, I mean, in May, right?
From the planning board. Last year.
Yeah.
They own.
This has all been approved?
Yes.
Okay.
They own along Williamsville Road. I can't get a camera on this, but they own along Williamsville Road. They own down this boundary line between them and another homeowner. They own farther down and around and back up and this land here back to Williamsville Road.
Okay.
But they have a big parcel.
This box, detail two, is a blow up of this little squiggly section here.
Yes.
They, they really should have said.
Yeah, they should have.
You know.
Why? So this is their twenty-five acres that the solar field goes in.
Twenty-five point six nine nine eight.
And what is this land like on the other side of that, where the blow up box is?
Where the who box?
She's talking right here.
This is the solar system with the dotted line, right? So what is this land?
In front of them.
Oh, they have a house. They have a horse barn.
Okay.
That's the old porch.
They have a driveway that comes down along this property line.
Okay.
And turns in and goes to a very nice home and horse barn and, you know.
Okay.
Paddock areas or whatever they call these.
Okay.
And this driveway continues on down and provides a right of way to what I think is DCR land back here.
Great.
And it's very undeveloped. It does slope from a high point here down to what ultimately is a, is a Hubbardston Brook, I think. Or kind of, there's a brook down here.
There's quite a ways.
Thanks, thanks.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Thanks, I was just.
It's slow. It's a little bit ledgy.
Okay. Yeah.
Oh, wow.
Great.
These, these people, these people are good. It's a little bit ledgy and they're, they're, it's not prime land. It's.
I just appreciate the background on the abut. I knew you, you've granted this. I don't want you to go over it, but.
No, I'd be glad to.
If I say, who's the abut and how does this work and what's it gonna look like, it's very helpful to me. Thank you.
This solar field, I think, is, is very distant from the closest house. I'm gonna say over a thousand feet and it's on the actual plans. There's a narrow window dimension to the neighboring house. There's some wetlands here. That's why this driveway bends. There's a wetland in here. There is a slope away land and they'll put a, and I can't remember exactly what's here, but it's. Available in great detail. Six, eight, ten drawings in our file, in the drawing roll.
Thank you.
And I'd be glad to go over it sometime if you want. We lived through it.
Thank you. More than enough detail. Thank you.
So.
Yeah, I had a second. Cause there is not a, there's not a second.
I'll second.
Could you read the motion, please?
Yes, original motion was that we send a letter to the selectmen requesting that the waiver be granted. However, Alice made a friendly amendment. We see no reason why the waiver should not be granted.
Sounds good.
Right. And it's going to be a very brief letter. Is this something that I will be writing?
If you wouldn't mind.
I. Okay.
Is that appropriate, everybody?
Yeah, I have no problem.
Sounds good to me. Okay.
Now, it's gotta get to them by their meeting Monday night.
Okay, well, I'll do it tomorrow then.
Do you work tomorrow?
I do.
Oh, tomorrow's Thursday.
Tomorrow's Thursday. Yes.
We need a vote.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Thank you, Bill. Keep me out of trouble.
I will and I will get this over to.
Now, I think it is your turn, Christina.
Yes. At the writing of this agenda, we had several upcoming planning board matters. They were applications in progress. Just to let you know, we had an A and R and a scenic road application. The scenic road application has since been completed and will be at our next meeting. So we've already done the public notification of that scenic road application on Healdville Road and I'll be bringing all the information on the ninth. And this other one here for Gardner Road was in progress until this afternoon at one o'clock PM. So now it is a completed application and I didn't know if the board wanted to review it now or put it on the agenda for next week.
Most appropriate, thank you.
We don't need to do public notification with regards to an A and R. Once it is complete, it can be brought before the, but you guys haven't had any chance to review this prior to the meeting. So I want to let you know about it. It, it was held up for several weeks because it was submitted by someone who was an executor of a will. I had to have proof that he had, his executering was up to date.
Right.
Uh, this is for the Thomas Morris estate on two forty, which also has a.
Right.
Solar field up there.
Right.
And they're just trying to break off the land that surrounds the house, according to Donald Lang, who is the executor. This is with, in keeping with the will.
Question, has a solar field been approved by us a long time?
Yes, a long.
So that, so we will have seen that boundary?
Yes.
I mean, those boundaries.
Yeah, we have the, the big picture.
This is, is this far, this is four, four acres off, way off to the right, the solar field is.
And does it, and the second question is, does it have the, the surveyor seal approval, subdivision approval not required on it, the A and R?
We have.
Sorry, I have a first suggestion. We have what's called the A and R checklist.
Okay.
When people put in an A and R, we unroll the plans and we go down our checklist and we say, boom, 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 boom. Now Christina was proactive on this and my compliments. She got with the guy that submitted this and said, this is what you gotta do to get it approved. Here's the checklist. So could you take us through it, unroll them?
No problem.
And go through the checklist and.
Can I ask, what are we approving that? Okay?
We would, we can tonight approve this. It's an approval not required. Plan to subdivide land and we can approve it if it meets all the checklist requirements and the by, the checklist describes what the plan shows. Then you have to evaluate, does the plan show something that meets the bylaw?
This is the full property. Okay, all up here.
Yeah.
This little piece right over here, and there are several copies so that you guys can. This is the proposed subdivision, including the wetlands.
And how does this relate to this? Fill me in.
Okay, I'm sorry. You're looking at.
This is on the sixty-eight.
Looking at, or I'm looking at a four acre.
You see that? There's Gardner Road.
Gardner Road.
Here's Gardner Road.
Yeah.
And this here.
So this is a Tom Morris.
Okay, got it. If you put it like this, you can see it's this.
And the solar farms up in the.
Well, where is the solar farm? Cause it needs frontage.
Right, oh, well, this is still all intact.
All right.
Which would have to be two hundred feet, correct?
Yeah, well, this is more than two hundred feet.
Okay.
Where is, there's two solar farms.
On two forty?
Well, there's two thirty-eight and two forty.
Correct. Two different names, well.
I don't have that information. I can get that. I, I didn't.
Kathy and Robert Newton, that's not our applicant. That's the abut.
No.
Right, this, and this is.
And what are these pencil lines?
Um, this is what he submitted originally to me. Well, I'm sorry, this is almost what he submitted originally to me. He did not have the wetlands on it. And I went on the GIS, Axis GIS map and found out there were wetlands within the property and insisted that he take them back and, and draw the wetlands because that's on our checklist. So he had to do this. Then I told him that I needed a map of the entire property, not just the piece that he was cutting off. At which point he brought me this and said, can I please have this one back? So this is for us, but this is the map of the entire property. I did not grab a copy of where the solar farm, I didn't think of that. But this is the entire, okay, this is the entire property and this is what he is, he's cutting off. And this is our.
Take us through our checklist.
Our checklist. And just so everyone knows, this is his letter of authority for purpose and representation of the property. However, it is dated July. I told him that based on your decisions, he may have to get an updated one. He did when the solar farm went through. They needed to make sure he was still authorized to represent the property.
Right.
And that one's six months old, but I, he gave me that one.
Does six months some kind of a deadline or?
No, but it could, it's a matter of determining, the, the property's in probate right now. So he's a representative until the will is executed.
I, I, I don't think he can record that plan without an updated certificate. I mean, that's, we're entitled to one too, I suppose.
That would mean a certificate that is dated pretty close to today.
Yeah.
Yeah, and I told him that you guys might require that, but I wanted to bring it to you.
But we could also approve pending our clerk's receipt of an updated certificate if you want.
Well, the thing is, is once you sign it, he's, he, or I'm sorry, once you sign this, he's, he's good to go. So we might wanna, you know, just make sure we have everything and.
I'd like to see the solar farms on there.
Where it is on here.
Yeah.
Okay.
Isn't it, is it not this parcel?
No, it's. See this thing here, lease area? This pencil on a drawing like this doesn't make it for me. But I would, this, this is the lease area for their incoming driveway and a set of eight poles. Then the lease, the lease driveway goes on up a hill here and there's solar fields here. And over here is the railroad tracks, I think.
Yeah.
Here's, here's railroad.
I have official plans, I believe, from the two forty Gardner Road. I might be able to pull those.
We need the Borrego drawings.
You want, I have the Borrego drawings for this.
Oh, good. I'd like to see those, like Tom said, I think it makes sense.
Let's consider this a preview.
Okay.
Of the land layout, but also a preview of how we do A and Rs.
Right.
What I remember is that there should be a Mylar and a whole bunch of other ones. We, we used to sign five and six drawings.
Right.
Well, we were, the, the checklist only requires three.
Oh, we've got three here. Okay. Okay, I didn't see that.
So, yeah, that's property boundaries, north point, date and scale have to be on it. So this is the, this is the checklist.
Why don't you go, yeah, go down the checklist and we'll, we'll do it.
We'll see what we have.
Okay, we've got the north, north point, north point is the arrow, yeah, property boundaries.
These are the, here's Gardner Road and here are the property boundaries.
Yeah.
Yes, right. Date and scale.
Should be over here.
Where the scale is, it's gotta be here somewhere. Where the scale is, it's gotta be here somewhere.
I don't see it.
It's here, right here.
Yep, there it is, yep.
Okay, and here's a date, eleven twenty eight eighteen.
Yep.
Um, name of, of the record owner, name of the registered san, land surveyor.
That's here.
Yep.
Estate of Thomas R Moore.
Yep, and Zoc. Uh, and the Worcester Registry of Deeds book and page reference for conveyance to record owner.
That's here, owner, book, yeah, page.
Area of each lot.
Shows on the plan.
Yep.
There's only one lot on this plan, however, when you take a, and, and Zoc should know this. When you take one lot and you make it into two lots, you are, two, two things happen. You pay two A and R checks, I think it's a hundred and seventy-five dollars a shot.
See, I, I asked about the, uh, um, several people, the thing, and they said it was one, because they were only creating one new lot.
They created two, because they split it in half.
Lots, yeah.
Okay.
You got the.
Yeah, you got the, you got the, the new lot that he intends to break off and you have the, what is now a new, newly shaped lot.
And they have to record that.
Yeah.
Out of curiosity, then why would we ever put a hundred and seventy-five dollars on the website, no one would ever pay that, right? They'd always pay more than one.
No, it's per plan. Um.
Oh, no, that's what I'm asking though, you never pay a hundred and seventy-five dollars.
You're always creating two lots.
No, you're not, no, you're not. Um, we, we had several that we processed as a singular lot. Um. I, I can't right now, as I, as I stand here, give you a simple example, but, um. You, you, I, I believe we need a plot of the original large lot.
Okay.
Such as this.
Mm-hmm.
Right, which is a lot.
And then, a description of this one and a description of that one.
Yep.
And a check for this one and a check for that one.
Okay.
And I will check with, uh, Vin Ritchie, our historian and, or in fact, you can call Vin Ritchie. And, and confirm that this is the, this is the process, but this is what I remember. And, um, I believe the checklist says something about a application fee for each lot.
No, okay, so sufficient data to determine location, direction and length of every street and way line. Lot line and boundary line, monuments or references necessary to establish those lines, I was gonna go down it.
Here it is, number ten. In the case of the creation of a new lot, as we're doing here.
The remaining land area and frontage of the land and ownership of the applicant shall be shown.
Alright, where's the fee? There's, there's a thing about the fee here.
Up at the top, this plan will be submitted in triplicate with application form A, along with a submittal fee of hundred and seventy-five dollars. To the town of Hubbard, Hubbardson Planning Order Company by the necessary evidence to show that the plan does not require approval.
Alright, I'm gonna have to check myself, but, um, I, I know that this drawing. Does not adequately describe both the new and the form lot.
Which is why I had, I told him that, and that's why he brought in this.
Reference to this plan, which is probably sufficient, because it would send you back to that plan.
Well, I don't know what this plan is when it's got pencil marks on it.
I mean, if that's, if this is a recorded plan at the registry, which it says it is, see also Plan Book Four Fifty-three, Plan Ninety-eight, is that this plan?
All due respect, I don't believe it's recorded with the pencil lines on it.
Correct.
I, I think what we want is one of these. That shows what our checklist says he should show, and I'm very surprised that Zoc. Either I'm dead wrong, or Zoc is, is surprising me by not being compliant.
That's why I pushed back on him about this, I said, it's not just number ten, it's actually also number, um.
Twelve or whatever.
There's a couple of other in here that also, including the wetlands, he has to show wetlands on both properties and you can't do that if you can't see the entire property.
Right, yeah.
So I did push, that's why he sent in this and I, again, I brought it in here knowing that you guys might push back and go, we need an official one.
This is, uh.
Oh, it's old.
It's not only old, but it's been modified, so.
Fourteen, two thousand fourteen.
Yeah, it's.
Okay, a few years old there.
Um.
Okay, so I'll have him, uh.
And this says not a record written on it.
Yep, not a record, right, okay, so.
Written on it, but this does reference a record that is recorded, a plan, so maybe.
We're talking about this land.
So we need a full one, I'll make sure he knows that.
This goes like this.
Right, you gotta show both pieces.
Cut corner.
Gotta have both pieces.
And this is the part that is not described, they ran out of paper here, they gotta, they gotta give us the rest of the world.
Okay.
Shrink it down a little bit.
And if you could bring in the Borrego solar.
I will.
Drawings, this is good exercise, we're, we're getting it.
Okay, uh, do we wanna keep going?
Yes, please.
Location, names and present width of non-public, private ways abutting the property.
Gardner Road.
Okay, suitable space to record the endorsement of the board.
Wait a minute, there's no widths on these, what, what did you say we did again?
Location, names and present width of non-public, private ways abutting the property, there are no pub.
Okay, it's a private drive, it's not a way, okay, got it, yeah.
Uh, suitable space to record the endorsement of the board approval.
Yep.
Is not required, and the signatures of the members of the board. Um, zoning classification and location of any zoning district boundaries that may lie within the locus of the plan, which. Does not apply in this case, it's all residential.
Zoning, residential agriculture.
Yep, in the creates of, the creation of a new lot, the remaining land area and frontage of the land and ownership of the applicant shall be shown, which is what I told him.
And he, he didn't make it.
No, that's why he, as I said, I think, anyway, location of all existing buildings, including setback and side and rear designations. And rear yard designations, he didn't actually give, um, setback distances.
Yeah, normally that's on a new house, to prove that you're locating it according to the.
Right.
Which was already approved.
But this, this remaining land has more than the minimum required. But, but look, it's a nine hundred, I mean, this is a huge parcel, oh, no, it's six, remaining land, sixteen acres, and this is four acres.
Saying there is that there's, um, upland areas, in other words, not wetland.
Okay.
That's what it says.
Right, a location of area of any wetlands on the lots being created by the plan, including the lot being created by the remaining land. In, in lieu of, because there's also another wetland here, according to the G I S access map.
Which is, this should, says that should be.
Which will be within the sixteen acres.
Yes, which is within the sixteen acres. Uh, in lieu of delineating the wetlands on the remaining land, the applicant may provide written certification from the surveyor or professional engineer who prepared the plan. The remaining parcel of land contains the minimum required upland area.
That's what that's saying.
Which is why I think he put that in there.
Right.
But what, is in lieu of what, in lieu of what?
In lieu of delineating the wetlands on the remaining land, he didn't show the remaining land, but he didn't, so. And then, uh, A and R approval does not constitute compliance with zoning requirements for building purposes, that's what we have.
Yeah, I think it needs a little work.
Yeah.
And I think we need a, the big picture, which is the two thousand eighteen Borrego, or two thousand seventeen Borrego drawings.
Yep.
Um, and. I think he needs to go back with a C size drawing with, with this other lot on it.
Yes.
And, and, uh, would you call Vince on the fee?
On the fee.
I remember sometimes we got one and sometimes we got two fees.
Mm-hmm.
And, um, I wanna be fair.
Okay, but every, and every time, maybe splitting a lot in half, then there's two different lots now.
Yes.
So.
Um.
Yeah, you see, that was the thing, is I found several that said one seventy-five, so I was like, oh, well, it must be one seventy-five for the new lot.
Don't get me wrong, I'm not worried about the money, I just wanna be, I just wanna be fair to all applicants.
Okay, and, and. Every time you pair up a lot, you would then have two lots, right?
Correct, it should track flights, that's what our policy's on.
So, so let him check, let him check, I think.
It's also on our fee schedule online too, it says one seventy-five per lot.
Created.
The, the, no, yeah, well, it doesn't say created, it's just per lot, and on the fee schedule, the two thousand, you, you're two thousand one.
Right.
Per lot, but I'm like, per lot created, so I didn't per lot.
Isn't it, isn't it true, we're gonna try to catch up with Vin in the next week or so?
For affordable housing.
Yes.
I sent, yeah, an email on that.
Yes.
Uh, we might be, it, it might be a lot easier to put this physically in front of him and ask him about it than to try to describe it over the phone.
Okay.
Um, so if we don't, we don't have to have this.
Certificate as well.
By, uh, Feb, we don't need this for January ninth, but we can get it by February seventh.
Yeah, we'll have it for the February meeting.
He may be in a hurry though, the executor, if they have a buyer for it or something, so.
Well.
I'm, I. This isn't recorded, so it doesn't meet the requirement of showing a recorded plan with the rest of the land, no matter what.
Zoc is a very professional.
Oh, they're very good.
Surprised that he's not coming in, like, just, you know.
Well, maybe he can come in, yeah.
Well, he has people working for him too, so.
Hmm.
Uh, it should be a more routine process than this.
Okay.
But very good on going down the checklist and taking all those initiatives.
Where does that checklist exist, can you email it to us?
It is actually on the website under, uh, planning board forums.
Oh, it is, okay.
A and R plans, it does say.
Yeah, I'm gonna look it up.
And I've, I've actually forwarded it to the, the people who've asked for A and R, it's like, okay, here's the application and here's the checklist.
A and R checklist?
It's A and R, um, I believe it's A and R checklist, I'm not sure, I don't have the website in front of me.
Yeah, great.
Uh, did we get through that, the plan of action, just, we don't have any motions, but the plan of action is to determine.
Yes.
That there are no, or, or correct what we perceive to be deficiencies. And then bring it up to speed, bring it back in in February, first week of February.
Right, and I think I may give in a call, just because I, I don't wanna call this gentleman and get all this stuff rolling, and if he owes us another check, I wanna.
Right, you wanna find out first, yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah, do, do it whichever way you feel comfortable, I was just saying, saying we take advantage of the fact that we're gonna be face to face with him.
The primary flaw is that there's no recorded plan of the remaining land.
Yes, and we need the updated. Resident.
And, and we should assure ourselves that the solar system is standing on its own two feet. It, it doesn't, for instance, cross a boundary or, you know.
Something with regards to this.
Right, yeah, it has its own frontage and it has its own boundaries, yeah, it's very important. Especially with all the change there, recent change.
Right.
I don't wanna reach back to a five-year-old plan.
No, no.
Okay, what else do you have in the way of administrative activity?
Uh, nothing at the moment, um, I've had, uh, obviously that scenic road application, which we're bringing up next week. Um, aside from that, I've had a couple of, uh, requests for, um, like, could you give me the A and R form? But because they haven't come back, it's sort of like, it's a, you're not sure if they're actually gonna move ahead with it.
Right, right.
So.
Yeah, you're just, you, you have to hand out the.
You gotta go first.
One thing I think I remember us saying tonight was, if you could add the scenic roads to the little thing up in the corner of the website. That says, contact the tree warden.
Right.
Right underneath there, say also, check for scenic roads, and by the way, here's a link to the scenic roads list.
Yep.
What, do you think we should put something more? Cause just to put it up there, would, would people be apt to click on it just to look, or should we say something about it?
Maybe something like, uh, uh, don't take down rock walls or trees, if you live on one of these roads and then click.
This.
Right, if you, well, you know, it wouldn't.
Before modifying, yeah, any wall or cutting any trees, check our scenic bylaw.
Yeah, have you, do you live on one of these roads, click here, and they click in and they can get the list of the.
It's not do you live, um, it's, are you going to enter this property with, say, a piece of equipment? Um, that's what usually happens, somebody goes in and does a test perk or a test.
Per test.
Hole.
Yep.
And they, they blow their way in with a pretty big piece of equipment, a backhoe.
And then they don't put it back.
They don't put it back and they don't, they, they destroy things in the process of doing this, so I don't wanna restrict it to. Uh, let, let's say, um. Before work begins on a, on a piece of property, before any work begins on a piece of property. Please.
Click here.
Verify scenic road and. Shade tree act compliance.
Okay.
Just something so they'll look at it.
You, you gotta comply.
Right.
Well, we're learning a little bit. Where are we now, we're up to the, uh, public roll call vote, enter executive session, if we choose to. I'll read the whole thing so that everybody knows what's going on.
Can I ask for a two-minute recess?
Yes.
Thank you. Hey. You wanna go for me while you're in there?
Christina, do you have a second?
Yeah.
In the, in the break. I have a question, the, uh, lot board for, um. This lot that we're talking, that is coming up.
Oh, it's zero eights, uh, the parcel is, uh, zero eight, uh, zero six four, it's that. But it's called four C according to, and that's why there's a little confusion on the actual official notifications on the website. It actually says, I put in the parcel number, because at the moment, Healdville Road.
So it is this, 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 this one here?
It's this and it goes all the way to the road.
Okay, fine, because if the way it looked, the way it looked on the map, it looked like it was the, was born upon Friends Camp, that's why.
No, 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 as I said, it was a little confusing when I said four C, what is four C?
Gotcha.
Are you on the G I S maps? Francois?
I'm sorry?
Are you on the G I S map?
I have no idea what map I'm in, but.
Yeah, it's the access G I S map, that's the.
G I S, that's correct, yes.
Okay, I'm sorry, did you ask me a question?
Yeah, I asked you if you had a good hold of it.
Yeah, Santa was a little skimpy.
He was, huh?
Yeah.
Didn't get your Mercedes?
No, I got like a pair of socks.
So, I have a question for you, if we meet with, um, Vince, and this is down the open, he was the chair. For affordable housing. Um, I want Francois to help work with me on that, if we wind up doing it. But I'm a little concerned about open meeting laws and problems with that, can he come to that meeting?
Um, I guess I share your concern, um. I was going to attend.
Yes.
Because I've got the history there.
Okay.
He's not a member, you and I would not form a quorum.
Quorum, right, and he's only an alternate.
Was gonna attend.
And I don't form a quorum, because I'm a non-voting member.
And it was, it isn't a special permit, so it's not his.
He's a non-voting voting member.
Francois, if he's not a special permit.
Said he's not going to be on the Affordable Housing Committee, so that's not even a quorum for that committee.
I'll be on it, I'm not gonna run it.
Oh, okay, so that would be a quorum, because you'll be on the, all of you will be on the Affordable Housing Committee together, so if you were all.
Right.
Because then all of you, I, then, then he'd be a voting member in that committee.
That's right, we're not evaluating the planning board, we're evaluating.
Be on it too, that was my understanding.
No, I, I wanna offload the work. But I, I intend to participate, because I have the history and I have revised copies of the plan.
Well, the problem is, posting it as a meeting, we can't do it, because we don't actually have a committee at this point, right?
Yes, we do.
Do we, is the committee you mean?
There was, there was a lot of talk in a prior meeting about whether the planning board has properly formed this meeting. And that is inappropriate. We have properly formed this meeting, uh, uh, performed this committee, we haven't, as far as we're concerned. Um, what we did was back in July, we made a list of who's gonna be on what committees.
Yes.
And everybody on the planning board was entered into the affordable housing committee, however, the affordable housing committee has other members. For instance, the, uh, select board has an ad hoc member.
The zoning board of appeals used to have one.
The zoning board of appeals is a member, a real member.
Mm-hmm.
Not a, not a, not a, uh, ex officio member, I said ad hoc, I meant ex officio. So, we formed that, uh, committee, and we sent our names over to the select board, and people don't recall, but the select board voted us all onto that committee.
So this is not the committee that put the plan together, it's, it's a new committee formed in July of this year?
That's correct, it has to be, because people leave it and come back, and they, we've formed a new, new membership. And we are seeking other members, or in fact, the select board should be seeking other members, uh, they should flesh this committee out with members beyond just the planning board contribution to membership.
Correct.
Okay, well, can, Christina, can you get a copy of who was voted in? Who the members were and?
I believe it's, um, uh, we had a table, and I can, it's in the, uh.
Maybe it's in minutes from there.
July eleventh? Yeah.
Selectmen's meeting?
I wasn't in the board.
No.
No, I'm sorry. I have a copy of Alice, I can get it.
And. And we need to add Alice to that and get her approved by the, uh, or appointed by the select board.
Okay.
Um, cause you're not, you weren't there yet.
I was informed, but Joyce said ad hoc committees don't need necessary appointment.
Now, how about Francois?
We have appointment then, we have appointment, I remember going to the select board with our list of who's gonna be members, and it was, remember, you, you made the motion to accept the whole list.
Okay.
Um, it was a table, and it had the various committees and who was gonna be on it with check marks or whatever, and, um, that's the way we did it, and the select board said, okay, and.
Right.
Uh, appointed those members to it, but you weren't here yet, so we need to get you on.
I wasn't here, but there are other members besides our planning board, is what you're telling me.
That's correct, there was a ZBA guy, and there's, you know.
Right. I was on that for like, six years, and nobody did anything. We had.
What do you mean?
A long time ago.
Oh, well, that's gone, we, we reformed it in two thousand ten or eleven or something.
Right. Right. Yeah, I wasn't on that, but.
Yeah. Um, we, it was, it was significant work done in the ten to twelve to thirteen range, and then there was significant work done in the fifteen, sixteen range.
Was there any work done after that draft plan?
No, I believe, um, the draft plan was about April, uh. Two thousand sixteen.
Fifteen fifteen. Set the date on it, have that.
Somewhere in there.
Yeah.
I, I remember, because we had, uh, members of the committee, uh, members of the planning board or the ad hoc, uh, affordable housing committee that had some health, health issues, and we got involved in. The Dirty Dirt project, and we got involved in other projects that swamped the affordable housing effort.
So if we want to pick up this plan, this draft, and try to get it submitted to the state for being what it is, knowing that we have already, we're into the next time period very soon.
Actually, I actually spoke to them today.
Yes?
I'm sorry, I, uh, was gonna let you know after the meeting, uh, just so that you know, I did speak to them today, and we don't have to be, I'm sorry, the Department of Housing and, uh, Community Development.
Right.
His name was Phil Di- Di Martino.
Okay.
Very nice gentleman, he said that, um, it is not mandatory that we have this on file, yes, we, ours is expired. But basically, this is a way for us to be working toward, having a plan is a way to, even having a plan in place, even if you haven't executed it entirely, is a way by which you can say you're working towards affordable housing, um, and have something to show in the face of like, an application. You could be like, oh, okay, well, we have this plan on file, we don't need to have it on, that we don't need to do a, a, one in retrospect, which was what I asked him, I said, do we need to go back and do it?
Okay. Okay, yeah.
Um, he is also willing to, uh, proofread our draft.
Oh, wow.
He also said we could talk to the MRPC, because they are, um, by certain statutes required to give us a hand occasionally, not, yeah, free of charge, so we can talk to the MRPC, but these are all things that he, he brought up, and I was going to enumerate them to you, I just wanted to, I didn't know we were talking affordable housing tonight, so.
Well, we drifted into it, we'll, we'll forgive ourselves, but, um, the affordable housing plan also makes you eligible, I believe, for, I won't, I don't know if it's grants or just consideration by other people like Montez or Regional Planning Commission. Uh, Tom Bracco was effective at getting, uh, I think, a five thousand dollar grant to get us the economic development chapter of our master plan, and we may have, be able to secure a grant to advance our affordable housing chapter, you know?
Cool.
And so, uh, three things, you need to get on the committee. And what that means is, we write a note to the selectmen, uh, recommending, uh, well, no, first, we should move to vote to recommend Alice to the affordable housing committee.
I make a motion that we vote, I make a motion to appoint Alice to the affordable housing committee.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Alright, so Alice.
I'm sorry, Alice, did you vote aye on that, you can raise your hand.
Yes, I, I'm happy to serve.
I apologize.
Can we?
You volunteered last time, Alice.
You know, no, that's fine, I just don't know who this committee is, so it's kinda like.
You can't get out of it now.
Alright, go find out.
But I'll find out, we can go over to the ninth, put it on the agenda, and I'll.
Can we? Point Francois, cause from what I heard, from Alice, he's willing to.
I don't see any reason why we can't, there's two reasons why we can, uh, I believe there's a place for a citizen, regardless of board affiliation. There's a slot for a citizen on that board, on the, uh.
Committee.
Ad hoc committee, or he enters as a.
Planning board.
Well, he, he's not a planning board member, he's only a planning board member for special permits, and so we have to be, we have to distinguish somehow, we, we, I suggest he come on just as a citizen. And I'm not trying to, you know, diminish the planning board thing, but I suggest that that's what we do, we put his name forward, or he can put his own name forward to be on that committee, and the selectmen will raise their hands for Alice and Francois. I think that's what is best.
You hate that.
You, you wanna put your own name in as the citizen member?
You know?
I'd rather be invited by you, because that's what, we already agreed to.
I think, yeah, I think.
What do you mean, agreed to?
I would like to have him on, it just.
Then she, she mentioned this to me, that she would like to get me on this committee, and she asked.
Alright, but you can't be, you can't be on the committee, I'm, I'm gonna put my foot down, you can't be on the committee as a planning board member, cause you're not a planning board member.
We never discussed the role that, that, that I would be represented, so if I am going to be appointed, or not appointed, if I am being requested.
Considered, yeah.
By you, or considered as a member for this board, as a, as a citizen, I would like you to make that go.
Okay, so.
So we could write a note to the selectmen, I, I, I hear you loud and clear, we could write a note to the selectmen saying, we recommend Francois as the citizen's participant, or citizen's member.
Right. Yes.
Fine.
We could do both, so he could get on, and we could work together, that would be great.
That's right. The reason, the second reason for doing that is so that when we, we meet, uh, like, we're going to, going to here in the near future on the affordable housing committee, he's recognized as a citizen.
Cause you're not having an open meeting law violation.
Oh, no, wait a minute, if he, if he is a citizen's representative to the ad hoc committee, and the ad hoc committee has a meeting, I believe we have to post it, a meeting with a quorum, I believe we have to post it.
Yeah.
Which is no problem, if we have a meeting next Wednesday or something, we have a, if we have an ad hoc affordable housing committee meeting with Vin present, and we sit around and figure this thing out, we can post that meeting.
Right. You can post it, but the proper thing to do would be to let the other people who are on the committee know.
No.
That there's a meeting, so maybe.
That's the courteous thing, but you have, if you are the, if, well, we don't have a chairman yet.
Right.
If you're the chairman, you don't really have to tell everybody. No, you don't, I mean, it's courteous.
I know, I don't wanna start a, um.
About.
Here, here's what I suggest.
Right, when is the selectmen, if they're gonna, if they're gonna meet Monday?
I have a suggestion.
Yep.
Francois, just hang back one week or two weeks, and then we can have our meeting with Vin, we have no threat of a illegal or inappropriate public meeting, it's just us two people.
Okay.
And we're not a quorum.
Okay.
If we could just ask you to just hang back for two weeks.
That's why I think it's best for you to invite me, and then it can be done that way.
Well, yeah, but it won't happen for two weeks, we have, have to have our first meeting.
That's why I'm glad the invitation comes when it comes.
Figure this out, let's get to the table, get the old list of who the participants, and figure out what makes the committee establish the committee, elect the chairman, get it rolling, that's the right way to do it.
Alright, okay. But send a letter requesting both of us, and.
So, you still have to go to. Yep.
I'll come to the, but this got, this got us a long way, maybe this.
Do I have a motion for?
Is this a motion?
Yeah, I was gonna say, I have one for Alice, do I have one for Francois? Cause I haven't heard that one yet.
I'll make a motion that the planning board committee, uh, suggest or recommend Francois. Uh, to also serve on the affordable housing committee as a citizen member.
I'll second that. I don't remember the full membership, uh, second all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
That vote's done, I don't remember the full membership, but we had a ZBA person, we had a citizen, we had, uh, a couple of representatives from other boards.
You mean in two thousand sixteen?
Yeah.
We also had a, they also had a lawyer, um, Tom Bracco's daughter, I believe, was on it.
Well, yeah, but not as a lawyer, just as a citizen participant.
Oh, okay.
I mean, she is a lawyer, but, um.
So do we have my, now already a citizen?
No, she's moved away.
She's moved, okay, great, yeah, excellent, okay.
I thought we were forming a new committee, cause this one hasn't met in two years.
Well, that's true.
Okay.
But she's not eligible to be on it, she's not a resident.
Oh, okay.
She moved to some other state. Alright, Alice, I'm gonna give you that, if you get me, you, Vin, and Christina in a room, we can make some progress on that.
Okay.